Welcome, everyone, to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, September 24th. Mr. Strutters, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the Statement of Public Notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 2nd, 2018. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, can you please call the vote?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Here.
Councilmember Lees?
Here.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Vancherri?
Present.
Have a motion, a second to approve, the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancherri?
Yes.
Councilman Vancherri?
Thank you. Just one quick update. The Transportation Committee met last Thursday to discuss some of the topics I brought forth at last week's workshop in regard to the speed humps, and the consensus from the group was, you know, if residents are looking for that type of support, and it's unanimous, we should definitely explore it. So in terms of next steps on our end, you know, what I want to do is sit down with our engineer, and the mayor, of course, and council president, just to kind of map out a plan and some of the next steps, including, you know, figuring out necessary protocols in terms of notifying residents about the possibility of a speed humps, and also looking at some of the structural things that will need to be looked into on our end. So more updates to follow, but I just want to let everybody know that, you know, the consensus was, you know, we should definitely explore this opportunity, so I'll work behind the scenes to start pulling stuff together to share with the council at a later date.
Councilman Lees?
Working in the Little Falls Senior Citizens Advisory Board, we're going to again have an event that goes on every year, and it's the Harvest Moon Dinner Dance, and I have some sheets if you want to just look through it. And it is on October the 26th in the Civic Center, and of course, as a resident of the town, as a senior resident, you don't have to pay for it, it's being provided by the town. And it's something that always goes well, and you get to meet all members of the council because they're the ones who help you get your jitters from the trays that they have in front of them, and another thing. So it's a thing that involves people here, and the mayor also. So it's something to see. The food is always good, the fun is always good, and it's a great night out, and it's a night out that you don't have to go too far, and a night out that you don't have to pay for anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lees. Councilwoman Seaver?
Thank you. So flu season's right around the corner, unfortunately, as we all know, we'll be, the Clifton Health Department will be holding some flu vaccination clinics here in Little Falls, Thursday, October 4th, at the Civic Center, and Monday, October 15th, at the Municipal Building here. So the great thing is if you are a resident that has primary Medicare Part B only without an HMO, you will actually receive this vaccine for free. So that's a great service to many of our residents. All others, if you're interested, you'll have a fee of $20 only, so something great to participate in. And then also, our Little Falls Recreation Program is having a Halloween bash on Saturday, October 27th, always a lot of fun, and it will go from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Rec Center with a minimal cost, $3 if you pre-register, or $5 at the door. So really encourage all the residents to take part in that. And thirdly, we'll also be working with groups around town, such as the LFAC, to be helping promote Breast Cancer Awareness Month, just like we did similarly to raise awareness for women's health and mammograms a few months ago. So we'll be working along with other agencies around town to help promote that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cordenair?
Yesterday, the Little Falls Business Association had their yearly Fall Festival, and for those of you who didn't make it there, you really missed a great time. All of our businesses participated. We had so many of our food establishments there that literally you could have spent the whole day eating. It was really great, the businesses were wonderful. My personal favorite thing that they did was the costume, the costume contest for doggies. And I know the mayor and myself and Councilwoman Vancherri were very hard to be judges, we were judges along with two residents, and it was really a great fun, and people really loved it, and it was great to see all of the families. And really, just a note about our business community, they really don't do these things to make money, they do things to help our community and to show our community what they can do for the community, and we're really, really very fortunate, and I hope that residents and citizens really frequent our local businesses because we have many great ones. In reference to the Open Space Committee, I'll be sending out an email for the first meeting of the fall season, which will be sometime next week.
Excuse me, may I make another comment? I left, left out.
Councilman Lees?
One of the things I didn't, I should have said, and I meant to, is that you have to have reservations. You need to let us know when you're coming, it's on the sheet, and the number is, it has to be done by October 15th, and there's a phone number there to call the person so they know who's coming. And it's something that is done every year, and I can give some sheets out, but remember, you need to sign up for it before because you could never have everybody come at once because there would never be enough room for everybody who wants it because it's only limited to the people who sign up, don't have to pay, but they're there on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lees and Councilwoman Cordenair. Before I continue, we have a new engineer in our presence that hopefully will be joining us from here on in. I'm proud to introduce Mr. Kristoff, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your background.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Woodney Kristoff. I have about 20 years of experience in municipal engineering. I went to school at the University of Hartford where I received my bachelor's degree in 19, oh, dating myself, 1998, and I look forward to working with the township. My, I just started with the Limo Group last week. My current clients are Little Falls, my number one client, Woodland Park, and Elmwood Park. Prior to working at the Limo Group, I was the municipal engineer in Woodland Park for six, seven years, so I'm familiar with the area, I'm familiar with the historic drainage issues, and I have a great support staff in our Mont Holly office for the bigger board reviews that might entail other specialties such as stormwater, drainage, electrical, environmental, things of that nature, so.
Very good, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Currently, the council's working on this new sign ordinance that is part of the master plan recommendation. Hopefully, something will be on the mayor's desk soon for him to review and to also then bring back to the council, and then hopefully we can have it going through the process of the opinion of the public and so on, and making it the law. Mr. Simone, do you have any update on the Wilmore Road Lights Park?
I was just in contact with Mr. Lindsay today. Contractor has submitted his cut sheets for the different poles and the lights. They are moving ahead with it, and we're hoping to have it in place by Veterans Day.
How many lights are there that we're installing? Is it five, six?
No, there should be, it's either eight or nine, three at the foreign end closer to the Rescue Squad Building, and if I'm not mistaken, it's either five or six at the main park.
So for the audience's information, these are, I don't want to say old-fashioned lights, but historical looking lights, is that good to use? Historical looking lights that will go along the cabin pathway to the tank, sort of, okay, to lighten up that area. Does the council have anything else to say at this time? Mayor D'Amiano?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. At this time, it is my honor to have joined me up here all of the representatives from Little Falls ABC, our Alliance for a Better Community, who do so much for the town, I'm going to ask all of them to join me up here who are in attendance this evening to be presented with a proclamation. Just for the record, this proclamation was actually read to all of those at the ABC concert, at the last concert in the park on August 29th, I believe, there was that Thursday. This is the proclamation that was read to them there, but I wanted to invite all of them here this evening at a council meeting so that it can, so that it could officially be read into the township record. Whereas, the Alliance for a Better Community, known as ABC, is a volunteer nonprofit organization in the township of Little Falls, and whereas, the organization's purpose is to aid in the beautification and revitalization of the town and to help bring the residents and businesses of the community together. And whereas, the ABC has been an asset to the community, working alongside the township to help beautify the business districts, parks, and recreational areas. And whereas, in 2008, the ABC organized the first annual Farmer's Market and Concert in the Park in the township. And whereas, the Farmer's Markets and Concerts have exponentially grown in participation and are events that are enjoyed and anticipated by many during the summer months. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Little Falls hereby celebrate 10 years of successful Farmer's Markets and Concerts in the park and recognize the Alliance for a Better Community for its valuable contributions to this township. Thank you all for everything that you do.
Want to take a picture?
Sure.
One second.
Mayor, do you have anything else this evening?
Council President, I, as we had discussed, and it was sort of derailed a couple of months ago as a result of the water event that we suffered in the township, something that I still have on my radar and will very shortly announce the date for, as soon as I can coordinate with our buildings departments, is the town hall style meeting that I had discussed hosting for the township in a far more relaxed and informal environment where I can open the floor to questions and answers to any residents to address any questions that they may have. Far different than, you know, being here at a council meeting where there's minutes recorded, where there's a far more formal process. I want to have a relaxed atmosphere where we can have a town hall meeting, we can all sit around together and just talk and answer questions. I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts and ideas in the township so that we can continue moving forward in the direction that the township has been headed over these past few years, which I really believe is a positive direction. I don't have a date for that yet, I will be coordinating that shortly, and I hope to have that set up. I want to be, I want to utilize our Civic Center, we have a new sound system there that, in the event there are a lot of people that show, it will be plenty loud for everyone to hear any of the questions or comments or concerns, and for all of those to be addressed. So I will be announcing that date very shortly.
I think that's wonderful news, Mayor, for the township, so that those that feel intimidated to come up to the floor and ask questions in this environment would be less intimidated to come and ask you direct questions in that type of setting. So thank you for putting that forth. Mr. Winslow, do you have anything for the council this evening?
None other than the fact that I have had the pleasure to work with Mr. Kristoff in the past in Woodland Park. I think the mayor and council have made an excellent choice, and I have found Mr. Kristoff to be nothing but an absolute consummate professional, and I look forward to working with him again. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
I guess that seals the deal. Have a motion, a second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the council president, please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open. Pearl, would you like to come up? One second. If you raised your hand, I'm sorry. Pearl, would you like to come up?
I would.
That's okay, if you have mine.
Pearl, you know this is on agenda items, correct?
Oh, no. No, she doesn't.
Pearl Beers, 181 Long Hill Road, Little Falls, New Jersey. I received my senior letter for busing, so I can go on the bus?
Ms. Beers, I have to interrupt you. At this point in the meeting, it's for agenda items only, so you'll have to wait for the second public comment.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's, that's why we, that's why, Mr. Fernandez?
Mr. Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
I'd like to express my disapproval, my dissatisfaction, whatever you want to call it, with ordinance 1336, which basically says that you are going to appropriate the amount of $375,000 to buy property and build a parking lot, basically. The only reason why I'm opposed to this ordinance is because in times like this, and I see today quite a few residents of Jackson Park, we just had a flood recently, the town has done absolutely silt, not spent one single dollar towards the river. However, they're going to beautify and do something with buying a parking lot. I think the needs, I think that some of you, if not all of you, have the priorities somehow reversed. I think the residents of Little Falls come first, the properties in Little Falls come first. Quite a few residents, we have lost a lot of money and time and personal values and things that they have no, you know, emotional things and things like that. So I get upset when I see that they're going to take money from the taxpayers and buy a property in midtown or whatever it is, in main street, to do a parking lot, when the township hasn't spent $1 buying a bag of sand to put in the Peckman River to send the water, you know, some other way. And let me emphasize this, then I see Resolution B and C as in Charlie, and I see that almost $48,000 in taxpayers' money, they are going to be, in other words, they're going to be, they overpay and they're going to be refunded due to FEMA buyouts. Well, we were there, the residents of Jackson Park, we were there and we supported when those people, when they were being flooded, and in fact, we are supporting it now, because these $48,000, $49,000, guess who's paying them? The ones that are staying in town, us. We make it up. And our problem is being ignored year after year after year after year. And we are, between you and me, we are sick and tired of being ignored and paying taxes to solve everybody's problem. When is our turn? That's what I want to know. Like I said, they are spending, we are picking up basically almost $49,000. You haven't put a bag of sand in there. In fact, I recall a meeting that we had with, at the Civic Center a month ago, and it was an young boy from the government. Basically, he should have stayed where he works, down there in Trenton, because other than offering moral support, they haven't done anything. And I recall his conversation, and he said that they were the big brother, the state was the big brother. I'll tell you what, if I, if my brother, if my big brother, that's what the state is doing to us, now I kick him out of the family, because they haven't, they, for years and years, they've looked the other way and they ignore the problems of Little Falls. In fact, there was a group of, over the weekend, I had a pleasant visit, it was a group of ladies, young ladies from the Girl Scouts with their moms, and they were offering gift certificates to the residents of Jackson Park. They rang my bell and they offered me a gift, I didn't take, but they offered it to me. They have done more, those little girls, they collected more money than our big brother is doing for us. And they don't call themselves a big brother. In fact, that schmuck that we have in Trenton is raising our taxes coming October 1st, the gasoline tax for, any excuse to raise the taxes. However, we don't see a penny in Jackson Park. I'd like an explanation, and if you can tell us, when are we going to see something?
Mr. Fernandez? Before, first of all, you have an excellent attendance record at these council meetings because I was researching the minutes and looking at YouTube, I think one of these days maybe the mayor ought to give you a proclamation for attending so many council meetings because you do a good job at it. Let me address something quickly, and I want to, first of all, I want to open up to council. Does council have any questions or concerns according to Mr. Fernandez? Okay. Mr. Fernandez, a master plan is done every 10 years, and in that master plan, questionnaires go out and recommendations are made, okay? Your question to this council and this governing body is, why are we buying a house instead of taking that money? And your, your comment is, why are we taking money to buy a home for a parking lot and not using that money for the residents in Jackson Park? Is that the summation of your point tonight?
Some of it, yeah.
Okay.
And I know where you're going. 10 years, you said that every 10 years you do a, well?
By what?
I got news for you, Jackson Park has been flooded longer than 10 years.
Right. Let me finish there, so.
We're still waiting.
I'm curious, what role do you think the government could do for people?
What role?
Yes.
To protect them.
In the matter of the Peckman River?
In the matter of, in any matter that affects any citizen.
Okay. So let me go back to...
But it seems, it seems to me that we have money for everybody else, for the illegals, for the, you name it, but not for the residents, not for the taxpayers.
Keep in mind, Mr. Fernandez, we are all taxpayers, even those that sit on this dance as well. I am a taxpayer just as much as you are, sir.
I understand, I'm not arguing with that.
Right. The issue, the issue of the Peckman, I'll let the mayor address that and what he's doing on that behalf, but going back to as far as the money's being spent to purchase a home for a parking lot, those are two separate issues. That has nothing to do with the flooding issue.
But money is being spent in the lot, it's now free, it's $375.
That is correct.
And how much money have you spent on the Peckman River? Silt? Zero, nada?
Well, I stand corrected. Mayor, would you like to explain what we have done on the Peckman?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So first and foremost, to say that no money has been spent on the Peckman River is certainly a far cry of foul. That is entirely untrue. In fact, at the past several meetings, leading back over the past year, it has been discussed that the township is currently in the final stages of acquiring a trackhoe, which substantial funds are being spent on, that the Peckman River can be cleaned and dredged on its own dime. That dime being the taxpayers of Little Falls and Woodland Park, as the agreement we've entered into is to share all cleaning expenses of the river up and downstream, 50/50 with Woodland Park. So to say that money has not been spent on the Peckman River is incorrect. In fact, you may have noticed that just after the storm, we had machines in the river, and I don't know that we've received the final bill for that yet, I'm sure it will be somewhat hefty. We don't know exactly what the expense will be associated with Salamon Bros. cleaning out the river for us over that, that one week period, but I do know that the township appropriated $325,000 to assist with the cleanup and recovery of the Jackson Park area, as well as other areas of town that were devastated from the flooding. So to say that a penny has not been spent by this municipality is completely incorrect. And I'm not looking for a pat on the back, or either is this council, to say that we had no obligation to send one dumpster to Jackson Park, we had no obligation to send one extra garbage truck. It could have been the burden of the taxpayers and all of the residents of town to provide all of their own dumpsters, to get rid of all of their own garbage. We weren't going to do that. To the extent that this municipality was able to assist the taxpayers and the residents, we did that. We sent garbage crews, dumpsters, to no additional cost, we're not sending bills to the homes that put garbage at the curb, rather, that's an expense that all of the taxpayers of Little Falls, who have helped over the past year to build our surplus up to the $1.15 million or so, that is being taken out of that surplus. That is our bank in which we have to assist the residents in Little Falls. So to say that we've done nothing, I take great offense to. Now, that said, to say that nothing has been done with respect to the river, that is, again, completely incorrect. In fact, you've attended the meetings where the Army Corps of Engineers were present. Alec Peterson from the Army Corps, who I was in touch with just as recently as last week, is, they're continuing to move forward on the schedule that they proposed during their meeting. Part of that project is bank stabilization, it's part of cleaning the river, and that is something that they continue to move forward with. Now while I get it, you can laugh, they've been in town for 100 years doing the same studies, I feel the same way you do. But again, that is nothing that the municipality can do on our end to move them faster than we are. We have met their deadlines, we have provided them with responses and information, we have given them everything that they have requested. There is nothing more on the municipality's end that can be done. The municipality cannot fund a $350 million project as they propose. So without the federal funding coming through for us, you're right, this municipality can't build a wall, can't stabilize a bank, can't do those things. There is no money in this town's bank account to do those things. To the extent that this municipality can assist the residents, I feel that this town, and again, I'm not looking for kudos from a single person, I don't want it, I feel that this municipality, all of our departments, police, fire, DPW, and this governing body have put every bit of energy possible into making sure that those residents try to get back on track as quick as possible. And again, I take offense to you saying that nothing has been done down there. Now with respect to your question about the resolutions with tax refunds, yes, we do have to give a tax refund to homeowners who have prepaid their taxes by way of making an escrow payment by way of their mortgage, that when the house was sold, receives that money back as a tax refund. That happens in every single closing that has ever occurred. As part of the settlement, as part of the agreement on a contract to purchase a home, taxes are reimbursed. Now typically, the way that works is between the private residents at the time of a closing. Here, because the municipality purchased the property, the funds are reimbursed by the municipality to that homeowner. This was not a payment made to the municipality that we incorrectly took or that is incorrectly being given back. This is simply, they prepaid their taxes, we closed on it before the taxes were due, and we owe them the reimbursement for that amount. With respect to Resolution C, the cancellation of taxes, of that $39,975.50, we are not reimbursing one penny of that, we're simply canceling a future previously intended receipt of that money. So we are canceling that payment. It has nothing to do with being reimbursed to the homeowners. Now, with respect to what the state did and what everybody else did, the state at this point has done, to the extent that they can, sent their request, and they've provided their, all of the information necessary to the federal... their, all of the information necessary to the federal government. Much like municipalities, states do not have a bank of money to provide for the rebuilding of individual homes, of private homes. Much like municipalities, as we sent our request to the state for assistance as the first step, the state then sends their request to the federal government for assistance. As of last week, in my conversation with the governor's aide, there's been no response to the request that was sent on August 30th, the letter that the governor sent to the president, and that letter is actually posted on the town website, it's been there for some time. There's been no response to that at this point. But to say that this municipality has done nothing, to say that the state has done nothing, is completely untrue. Finally, with respect to providing bags of sand, I know you've indicated that, this municipality did have sandbags ready for residents.
It was just an example. I'm sure you understood that.
Fair enough. Then, again, at that point, like I said, the town is proactively attempting to avoid future flooding events. As of last week, Totoa has finally appointed all of its members to the regional floodboard, so now a meeting can be scheduled within the next week or two to continue moving forward with all of the good that the floodboard has done, including the acquisition, an original acquisition, of the trackhoe. We can continue to move forward with the acquisition of the trackhoe, like I stated earlier. And again, there were, I don't know how many yards of debris and dirt and sand removed from the Peckman River to assist and avoid the potential, God willing, of a future flooding event from it. So again, to say that nothing has been done, I certainly take offense to.
Mr. Fernandez?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
Okay. If you take offense, I mean, that I express my opinion, I'm entitled to express my opinion, you took offense, that's, I guess, your problem. You said that the town is in the process, it hasn't been done, it's in the process with Woodland Park. After how many floods? The town is in the process with Woodland Park to buy a trackhoe? It took eighteen years, the process, because it hasn't been done yet? That's number one. And this is, I quote, this is what you said, "The town is in the process." We don't have it yet. We may not have it. It's in the process.
As I indicated at the last meeting, the scope of the grant in which we are utilizing to acquire the trackhoe, which the floodboard was instrumental, the scope of the grant did not allow the trackhoe to be used to assist in the removal of dirt and debris from the contributaries to the Passake and Peckman River. We're in the process of attempting to modify the scope of the grant to allow us to acquire the trackhoe and utilize it to not only remove dirt and debris from the Peckman and Passake rivers, but from the contributaries to those rivers as well. And as far as your comment with eighteen years, I was twelve years old when the first, when the first event that you're referring to occurred. I've been mayor now for eighteen, nineteen months. To say that nothing has been done in eighteen years, I think you're pointing the finger in the wrong direction.
But now, Mr. Mayor, when we, the taxpayers, send the check, we don't send the check to Mr. Damiano, we send the check to the township of Little Falls. Who spends it? I don't know. Okay? I don't know if it's you. How he gets it spent? I have an idea. But we send the money. So, you know, if I point the finger, I pointed the finger at the township of Little Falls, which is where we send the money. Am I, are we clear on that? Okay? Another thing is that the Army Corps of Engineers, like you mentioned, yes, it has been eighteen years. What has been done? Nothing. We may flood tomorrow, we are in the same as we were eighteen years ago. Nothing. We don't have any protection against the Peckman River. And going back to the trackhoe, if the, if the Peckman River floods tomorrow, do we have the trackhoe to get it? No, we are in the process, so we still don't have. Another thing, the tax refunds, like I said, we, the residents that have been in this town for many, for quite a few years, we supported all the buyouts, all the FEMA buyouts, and we are supporting them for life. Because those properties, as you are well aware of, they can never be rebuilt. So the taxpayers of Little Falls, the ones that remain in Little Falls, we are picking up the tab, 2018, 2019, 2020, and so forth and so forth, while we, we get no resolution in sight for the Peckman River. And that's what aggravates me. If you had, or anybody had a plan that can come in front of, let's have a, let's not have a formal meeting, let's have an informal meeting in the civic center, where the sound is good, and you tell me, this is the plan, I guarantee you that within five years, the problem with the Peckman River will be done, will be solved, we don't have it. And like you pointed out during one of those meetings, during actually quite a few of these meetings, your kids may not see the problem with the Peckman River being solved. So, is that, are you giving us hope? Is that, do we have any hope? Or do we get the sense that, no, no, just keep paying taxes and keep your mouth closed? That's the feeling that we get.
Mr. Fernandez, mayor, one moment.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. I just take a little bit, you're very much welcome to speak, so we never said to anyone, have a seat and not, and close your mouth here. Okay.
I'm steaming.
Name and address, please.
Eighty-nine Turnberry Road, okay? I'll tell you, I wonder how many, sitting there, have read what we get here from the Army Corps of Engineers. They had a plan. They didn't like it, they didn't want floodwalls. Okay? We had the building...
When you refer to "they," who are "they," Mrs. O'Hare?
I didn't hear you.
When you refer to "they," who are you referring to?
Has anybody on this dais read the latest information we got from the Army Corps of Engineers? This is their plan to stop the flooding. Is it perfect? No. Is it finished? No. But until we get together and sit down and make the plan perfect, it's never going to be finished. I mean, they came up with a plan, has anybody read the mitigation plan by any chance?
Mrs. O'Hare, the mayor, from what I understand, you're on board with moving this forward as is, because you recognize every time there is a change to a plan, it sets it back four years. It may never be the perfect plan, you're right. That plan, even, we accept that as is, someone could always say, could it be this or could it be that? But it's high time we go with this plan. We can't wait any longer.
Exactly. No, I mean...
I hate to use the word "high time," but that's...
We got another grant for gauges.
Right.
How many years ago? And the DOT held us back. That's not Little Falls' fault. But from what I understand, that they now have said, okay, this gauge that we want to put on the bridge is the size of a loaf of bread, it's this big, and it weighs four pounds, and it's got a battery, and it's solar-powered, and it doesn't need electricity. So all you have to do is put it on the bridge. And how many years ago was that? And they can't, they're on, there's one on the bridge working now, gathering information from the satellite, but it can't send it anywhere because the town has to have a meeting with OEM, with the police department, with, you've got to tell this gauge where to send this state-of-the-art information, which will predict, which will tell our emergency people where, which streets are going to flood and which are not. So you have to send your equipment over here and not here, and waste it. Now, this is the second time that that Jeep dealer has ruined houses. Last time, they killed a man. All right? Now that man's got to be stopped. We have a building inspector, or what, construction, I don't know what you call him, but he should go down there every month. I bet he passes it every month. Make a new law, make him go there. And when he puts those Jeeps or cars where they're not supposed to be, fine him. Fine him. I myself called the DEP on him. And they went down, he moved the cars, he waited a while, and he put them right back. And because of that, how many? Thirty-three houses? Thirty-two houses?
Four.
All right. And some cannot be repaired. But this time, at least, thank God, nobody was killed. We can't just sit and talk about this. Somebody's got to do something. I've been working on this since 1998. And we have had successes, and what we got for it, it disbanded the floodboard. I can't forgive you for that.
Does the council have any questions or comments to Mrs. O'Hare?
Yeah, I have a question. When is something called legal?
Ms. O'Hare, can you, hold on a second, please? Does the council have any questions or comments to Mr. O'Hare at this time? Ms. O'Hare, continue. Continue.
I would like either the mayor or Mr. Gooch to call Alec Peterson and tell, ask him when we're going to have another meeting. What is our next step? Because as far as the Army Corps knows, we're not interested in this plan. I never told them that. Never.
Mr. Mayor Damiano?
Sorry if I lost my...
That's quite all right, Ms. O'Hare.
I actually spoke to Alec last week. He is continuing to move forward with the plan that was last discussed. They are continuing to move forward with the process. I spoke to him about actually amplifying the plan, and he actually discussed and recommended against that, because at this point, as Council President said, Alec's words to me were, it would possibly further delay the process. He also warned against the possibility, as was the case a number of years ago, where the project was suspended for a period of time because of lack of forward progress. So he said, now that we actually have some momentum, he actually encouraged us to continue to move forward. The one thing that he indicated may be possible as far as modifying the plan is adding some additional bank stabilization to the plan, which seems to be, in his opinion, and again, this is his opinion, not mine, although I don't disagree with him, probably the single biggest issue as to why we flooded. And that comes back to the banks not being stable, the trees being taken down, the trees blocking up the overpasses or underpasses for the river itself, causing the water to be ejected from the river. So that was something that he indicated is still permissible under the plan, something that he would look to expand further than even originally anticipated. They were here within a day or two of the flood occurring, and they spent about eight hours in town, walking the river with our OEM coordinator. So they are aware, the plan is continuing to move forward. I agree with what Mr. Fernandez said. I don't know if this will be the plan that actually takes off and actually happens. I don't know if my kids will see the plan. All I can say is, I will do everything I can in my power as mayor of this town to see that the plan does move forward. That said, with respect to the gauges, the third and final gauge on the Route 46 bridge, the DOT did finally give us their approval. I believe Yogi is aware of the approval having been issued, and now just needs to install the third and final gauge. Is that correct?
And when is it going to be done?
Yogi is aware. I'm unsure, he's his own contractor, with Gotham Analytics. With respect to the reporting of the gauges, we, and I know Mr. Simone can log in right now from his office and see the data that the gauges are providing. We, I believe Mr. Simone, he can expand on this if he needs to, met with Yogi just a week and a half ago or so, to discuss the readings that they are providing. The issue was that the gauges during the peak of the storm indicated that water levels were in excess of twenty feet at the Main Street Bridge. The problem with that is, is the, from the floor of the river to the bridge itself is probably only about ten or twelve feet. So to say that there was ten feet over the Main Street Bridge is completely incorrect. So the, again, the data that they provided, while they did provide some data, I believe, was incredibly flawed. Because if there was an additional ten feet of water above Main Street, I'm not sure that Councilman Vancheri would be here right now. He might be downriver with the way Hobson got affected, as it did with just a couple of feet. So again, there's been a meeting, we're trying to correct it. The problem is, these gauges, again, as state-of-the-art as they may be, seem to have some issues. So we're trying to work that out, we're trying to get those kinks out. I would love for them to provide accurate and up-to-date weather, I would love to be able to send our emergency services in the locations that we knew they had to be prior to the incident, you know, or event occurring. Unfortunately, we're just, they're just not at that point yet. And again, hopefully with the third gauge being installed, we'll be in a better spot. And the only thing that I would like to say is, while the gauges are great, the one thing that they cannot predict is the number of trees that are going to be washed downstream from Verona and Cedar Grove and all the way upstream that are going to block our bridges. The gauges cannot predict that, no matter how accurate they are. So even if every other reading was accurate, I don't know what kind of data that they could have given us about trees coming downstream from the upstream towns. And that remains a concern, and I'm hopeful that that's something that the Army Corps of Engineers will be able to help us with, with that plan.
What do you think about reproaching Cedar Grove and asking them if they would change their mind and rejoin the floodboard? Because Cedar Grove, there's a two-hundred-and-thirty-foot difference in altitude from Cedar Grove to Little Falls. And when that water comes down, I mean, my son's house now does not have one tree. He had beautiful, he had trees you couldn't put your arms around, they're all gone. You walk up and down the river. Little Falls has no decent trees anymore along the Peckman. And the irony of this whole thing is the original mandate that we got from Congress, that Congressman Pascal got through in the year 2000. One of the first things they said was necessary was bank stabilization. That was one of the first things. If you don't control erosion, I don't care. Not only that, the Army Corps' plans were for a hundred-year storm, we had a two-hundred-year storm. So what are they going to do about that? I mean, at this, like I said, again, pass the resolution, that the building inspector has to go to that Jeep dealer every month to make sure he's not putting those Jeeps where they're not supposed to be, because the Jeeps didn't clog the bridge. Those people in Jackson Park would have lost their minds.
Thank you for your comments, Sissy.
But...
No need to apologize. The floor is open for agenda items only. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor Damiano, for the record, can you tell who Yogi is?
Yogi.
Yogi, I'm sorry.
Yes, Yogi is the individual who, I don't know if he runs Gotham Analytics, or he is involved with Gotham Analytics, the company, who is tasked with installing the gauges along the river. He and his crew installed the gauges at both the Francisco Bridge and the Main Street Bridge after approval was provided from the county. Again, the most recent approval was from the DOT for the Route 46 bridge, the third and final one in the township of Little Falls, where the gauge would be installed, so.
Thank you. The floor is open.
Good evening. Arnold Krokin, 181 Long Hill Road, Little Falls, New Jersey.
For the record, Mr. Krokin, your number, unit number on 181?
H1.
Thank you.
Henry 1.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Yes.
In reference to ordinance number 1336, and as I've said previously at the last meeting, my concerns deal with procedure and transparency and citizen involvement. So, last week, Mayor Damiano posted comments on the Facebook page, you might be from Little Falls, if, with reference to the purchase of the house at 5658 Stanley Street. In his comments, the mayor stated that it appears that the post on Facebook about the purchase had garnered much misinformation, and that the posts were operating under misconceptions. The mayor stated with reference to the postings that it appears that most would rather falsify information on Facebook and make assumptions rather than contact him directly where facts and real information can be provided. The mayor concluded by stating that some would prefer to use Facebook to communicate and spread false information rather than utilize a far more truthful and real means of communication. In the past, I have requested of the township written a parking plan to no avail. When I submitted an open request for a parking plan, I received a response that the plan was deliberative and therefore unavailable. At the council meeting last week, I requested a copy of the plan, and the mayor responded that the master plan refers to the need for downtown parking. Well, I did my due diligence. I read the 2013 Master Plan Reexamination Report, and the report called for a study, a study, in order to develop parking strategies in both long- and short-term parking needs within the township's downtown center, I'm waiting for the plan, and to encourage active participation in the planning process by... in the planning process by Little Falls' citizens. Once again, as I've requested repeatedly in the past, where is the township's formal written parking study detailing specifics? How can there be a parking plan without a written document based on a study? How can one avoid the spread of false or misinformation without a written document when all else can be construed as hearsay? The full disclosure and the release of the town's written parking plan would address the concerns expressed by our mayor regarding Facebook postings that spread false information. The public has a right to know the specifics of the township's formal parking plan, not piecemeal. In the end, facts matter. In the end, a written document matters. And I hope there is some document because this misinformation, it's like, I don't know if people remember the game Telephone when you were kids, that you have people lined up and you tell someone a proverb or a motto at the beginning, and by the time it gets to the end, it's misconstrued. So, I appreciate the mayor offering information, but I'm going to repeat it somewhere and I may exaggerate it sort of like, you know, "I caught a fish this big"? No, "I caught a fish that big". It's not in writing. Where is it? The master plan that you referred me to said there'll be a study. Where's the study? That's my comment.
Mr. Karatkin? Are you finished, Mr. Karatkin?
Yes, I am, thank you.
So, Mr. Karatkin, before I let the mayor speak, I do want to point out on the master plan, ensure adequate parking facilities for both residential and commercial uses, develop parking strategies for both long- and short-term parking needs within the proximity to the township. And at the time in 2013, they called downtown. I'd like to promote more efficient use of existing and proposed parking infrastructure. And it was number four on the questionnaire when it was sent out to the town that traffic and parking was the most important to this township residents.
Can I just ask? If that's true, where is the plan, a written? Those are suggestions, recommendations. It says there should be a study. Where is the study? Where is the document that advances the issues that you raised?
That, but that's
Why doesn't the public have it? If it's there?
But that's what master plan is about, Mr. Karatkin. Why spend the time to do a master plan and look at those issues without studying the information?
Mr. Scobha, with all respect, where are the specifics in the plan? You're saying do something. I don't know what you're doing. Mayor Damiano at one time talked about, "Oh, we're going to buy this house." No other, you bought 60 Stanley. Nothing was mentioned about a plan to purchase perhaps the PNC parking lot, the three adjacent houses, that there'll be a parking lot from Stanley and Stevens to Ridge. No one mentioned, I read it, the mayor didn't say it at the last meeting about parking meters. That was in his post on Facebook. Why isn't it said publicly? Why isn't it written? This misinformation and falsifying of information is going to continue until there's something in writing.
I take real objection to falsifying information. But before, council, does the council have any questions or comments for Mr. Karatkin at this time?
Mayor, am I incorrect? I do believe that the purchase of the PNC parking lot had been discussed at workshops, and did we not have it in our budget?
In fact, the acquisition of PNC actually dates back to the original time that Boswell Engineering was here when they presented the streetscape plan for the township of Little Falls.
I hear, but you know, it's not discussed, you know, if people don't come to council meetings, they don't know this information. It's not available or anything. And one last point. I appreciate that the mayor has a Facebook page. But when he posts information that should be put on the town website and where his Facebook page has information that's partisan to one party, it's not communicating with all the residents of Little Falls. For instance, the last post I saw was about Water Main Break at Stevens and, on Stevens roughly in Maine. That was never put on the website. That was never emailed to people as a traffic alert. People need to know. As long as it's not, and my point is, as long as people don't know, there's nothing in writing. Very few people attend meetings. Very few people watch it on live stream or on Facebook. People don't know. And things are happening, and you're not getting input from people and citizen involvement. So, you can do what you want. I will continue to come and talk about process, procedure, disclosure, and citizen involvement. And you can tell me it's in the master plan? The master plan is skeletoned. It doesn't give details. And you give details out piecemeal. The plan for, as I said on Stanley, was never presented as a concrete plan. Little bits and pieces. So, are you going to tell me you're having in mind to buy the other houses?
Mr. Karatkin, I have to explain and get off my chest this concern that I have about your, well, the issue with this is, this is the issue with real estate. If I announce, in order to complete a project, I must acquire property A, property A just increased in value to that owner exponentially because an announcement is made that property A must be acquired in order to complete a plan. So, to post that properties A, B, and C must be acquired for the municipality to complete its parking plan, those properties have just priced themselves out of the market to ever be acquired. And once property A, I'm going to use A, B, and C as probable, properties 1, 2, and 3 next to PNC, currently, the municipality owns property 2. We're in the process through this ordinance, if passed, to acquire property 3. While there may be some discussions with property 1, by saying, "Well, now we own properties 2 and 3", and there's nothing done secretive. We are holding open public meetings. We are acquiring these and passing ordinances in public. We are posting them as required to do. But property 1, because of all of the discussion garnered as a result of this, I am now certain, has just increased exponentially, which will ultimately cost the taxpayers of Little Falls more money to acquire that property. There's been nothing done in the dark of night. We called no special meetings to pass things at 11 o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. There's been nothing done outside of the ordinary course of business for the municipality. I have talked to all of the neighbors in that area. And again, whether or not letters should have been written, doors should have been knocked on, postings should have been made on website, that is a matter of opinion in how things are relayed to residents. I felt in that time that knocking on doors was the best option so that I could see them face-to-face rather than sending a letter. Again, that is a matter of opinion. But once a parking, it is impossible for a plan, I think, in my opinion, to be set forth as you are indicating it should be because once properties are essentially required, it would be impossible for the municipality to ever obtain them at anywhere near fair market value.
You know, this may not be the form for an ongoing discussion about this. But my concern is, you're talking about the price going up. I'm concerned about the values of homes going down because I'm now living next to a parking lot. I'd like to hear a discussion why it was decided not to build a parking deck. Whenever other municipalities build them, they form a Parking Facilities Commission that could float bonds at a 30-year bonds, interest-free. You give long-term projections of what cost would be. There's never been a public discussion of any of that, any place for public input as to alternatives. I'm looking for a plan. I keep hearing things piecemeal. We can disagree about that, but I'd like to have citizen involvement, some sort of transparency. Maybe you're right about the market hazard, but it hasn't impacted some people. Is there a discussion about the flow of traffic in and out of that parking lot once it's constructed? What happens if you don't get the other houses? Are you going to put 60 back on the market? And one last comment about 60. I wish the town would maintain the property. And I'm not saying that the law, I walked past 60, and there's a nice sign saying this is property, do not trespass. And I walked up on the steps. You know, there's mail still in the mailbox. I think someone should go and perhaps remove the mail from the mailbox if we're concerned about our property. No one lives there. So, I have my concerns. I wish more things were discussed with the public, that you ask for input. There are people who have expertise about alternatives. I don't know how decisions were made. And that's my perspective. I'm sorry if we disagree. I'm looking for a better Little Falls. I've lived in the town for 12 or so years. I'm committed to making a difference, to making a change, making a better Little Falls.
Mr. Mayor Damiano, sorry.
Mayor Daley?
Mayor Damiano, I know parking decks was discussed and the alternatives to that. Would you like to comment on parking decks?
Sure. Parking decks have certainly been considered. One original, and people have recommended we install a parking deck down in the Mars Canal Lot. Unfortunately, it's not feasible because of the easement that runs underneath the Mars Canal Lot. It's impossible to build a structure over that. We are only able to, and only recently acquired it from the Water Commission. We're now only able to have surface parking. That aside, the cost of parking decks, as I discussed it with other municipalities, and I have reached out to Montclair, I have reached out to surrounding municipalities. In fact, I saw the most recent one proposed in the township of Ridge, or the village of Ridgewood at their train station. And the proposal and the bond that Ridgewood is looking to take out would come to a total cost of $50,000 per space once constructed. To me, surface parking is mathematically far cheaper to provide than structured parking. And in speaking to some engineering firms, I've been told maybe $50,000 is on the high side. And typically, you do bonds for a higher amount than, or you provide for the issuance of bonds higher than may actually be needed. I've been told, though, they haven't seen one lower than $30,000 per space. So, again, mathematically, it just doesn't make sense to put structured parking over surface parking, especially in Little Falls. If the needs were such where there was, you know, it got to a point where surface parking couldn't continue to be provided without paving, you know, 10 square blocks, I think, then it would become more of a reality. But at this point, I think there's a far less expensive solution to parking for the downtown area.
I have one last question, and I thank you for the time. To eliminate rumors and falsehoods, I've heard rumor that the town was interested in purchasing the Verizon Building on Maple. Is that a rumor? Is that true? Is that false? Is that a possibility?
The Verizon Building? I don't think a town can purchase a utility itself. I don't know that the building could ever be purchased.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Karatkin, if you would stay at the podium for a moment. Councilwoman and coordinator would like to comment.
My comment is, I think as a, as, might sound a little self-serving, but as a mayor and council, I think we have more interaction with the people of this town than the town has had in previous years. That being said, every year, we go door-to-door and talk to residents. And we have committees. And anybody who wants to be on a committee can be on the committee. But in speaking to people, whether it's when I'm at the Little Falls Business Association or when we're going door-to-door, I have never once had somebody complain that, "I don't know what you're doing. There's no transparency. I don't trust what you're doing." I don't ever hear any of those. And we go door-to-door and we ask the question, "Do you have any concerns? Is there any problems?" And, yeah, we get concerns. We get concerns about traffic and speeding. And that's something Councilman Vancheri and the mayor and the council president have been working hard on. And we have a transportation committee that's working hard on that, and it is a big issue, and we recognize it. And I hear about, particularly from our seniors and young mothers, about parking. I spend a lot of time at the library. I spend a lot of time at the Civic Center. And I hear a lot of complaints about seniors who want to go to the library but have to park too far away because there's not enough parking close enough. Or the businesses, and you can go talk to the businesses because they'll tell you this, they have employees that can't park because there isn't enough parking. Or they have to park so far away. Or if they park in the PNC lot, that they're hassled by the bank. And they're also worried, and the restaurants are worried about having enough parking so that their businesses continue to flourish. I happen to think that Little Falls is having a renaissance. And then we're just trying to keep that renaissance going. And I understand your concerns. I totally do. But I just wish you didn't have the premise that we are not being upfront and honest. I could understand that.
I used the word transparency. I didn't say you're not upfront.
Excuse me?
I used the word transparency.
Well, transparency, I would just have to say again, number one, just in terms of transparency, I mean, Mr. Karatkin, you and I can go back in memory. When would we have been able in years past to have this interchange for as long as we would be able to have and which I think is extremely important, and that's why we do it? But I also understand, and I do like the concept of town halls. I think they're very important. And I'm thrilled to hear that the mayor is going to do a town hall. And I am glad that you bring that point up. But I also have to balance that with, there are some things that we have to be prudent about because as the mayor says, we may not be able to say, "Yeah, you know what? We'd love to buy A, B, and C", and then after that comes out, we can't afford to buy A anymore. Or, at the same time, and we looked at this master plan when we were talking about parking, that sometimes first you have to consider, what are the possibilities? Where can we expand before we go back and come up with a plan? There's no point in coming up with a plan if we have no way to execute it. Maybe it's a disagreement of which came first, the horse before the cart or whatever that saying is.
The egg came, the egg came first.
Okay. But again, that's part of the issue. And lastly, you worry about property values. I always share that worry. It's very important to keep our property values. And I just have to say, just in terms of what that part of Stanley looks like, and I don't mean, and I'm sure we'll address your issue with the one house. I think, done in the right way, that's going to enhance the property values because those houses already are on a street that has a parking lot, a parking lot that looks decrepit and not well-kept.
Just
Yes, Mr. Karatkin.
Councilwoman, of course, there's a lot, and I just have one aspect I'm concerned about. And I think it's great that the mayor and the council go door-to-door. But I keep giving the example of Donato Drive when they came up with an issue. And it's important for, with Donato Drive, for all the people to have been present at the same time. And the example I'm going to give is where former engineer Lindsay said, "Oh, the sidewalks are only going to be four feet wide", and there was a number of people here from Donato Drive in the audience. Drive in the audience, and someone who was in construction got up and said, "Excuse me, engineer Lindsay, no, the sidewalks can be as wide as seven feet." So had you come to my door on Donato Drive and said, "Oh, Mr. Krokken, don't worry, they'll only be four feet," I believed you. But in reality, when everyone's in the same room, and hears the same questions, the same responses, and the concerns of other residents that they didn't think of is very different than you got, than the council and elected officials going door-to-door. So I think you need both, and I hope you would consider doing both.
Thank you, Mr. Krokken.
And I appreciate the time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening and participating.
It's always a pleasure to be here.
The floor is still open for agenda items only. Seeing who else come forward. Have a motion, a second to close the public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three two.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number one three three two, an ordinance entitled, Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter seventy-one, fees.
Have a motion, a second to open to the public hearing on ordinance one three three two.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on ordinance one three three two.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motions, have a motion, a second to adopt, ordinance one three three two.
So moved.
A second.
Mrs. Kraus, got to call the roll, right?
Yep. Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three three.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number one three three three, an ordinance entitled, Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter seventy-one, fees.
Have a motion, a second to open to public hearing on ordinance one three three three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on ordinance one three three three.
So moved.
Second.
Second, please.
Second. She did, Councilman Leece did.
I'm sorry, Councilman Leece, you said second, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion and a second to adopt, ordinance one three three three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three four.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number one three three four, an ordinance entitled, Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter two eighty, entitled, zoning.
Have a motion, a second to open to public hearing on ordinance one three three four.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, a second to the, I'm sorry, anyone like to come forward? Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on ordinance one three three four.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus, can you please have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance one three three four?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three five.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number one three three five, an ordinance entitled, Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter seven, entitled, traffic.
Have a motion, a second to open to public hearing on ordinance one three three five.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, a second to close, anyone like to come forward? Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on ordinance one three three five.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Have a motion and a second to adopt, ordinance one three three five.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Have a motion, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three six.
Introduction of ordinance number one three three six, an ordinance entitled, Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Acquisition of Real Property for Municipal Purposes in Buy-in for the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for October fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance one three three six.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three three seven.
Introduction of ordinance number one three three seven, an ordinance entitled, Bond Ordinance to Amend Sections four and ten of the Bond Ordinance, ordinance number thirteen twenty-six, entitled, Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of a Public Improvement and the Acquisition of New Automotive Vehicles, Including Original Apparatus and Equipment in Buy-in for the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted April twenty-third, twenty eighteen, with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for October fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Have a motion, a second to introduce ordinance one three three seven.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Leece?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Kraus. For the, for the public knowledge, can you just explain what we just did, basically? Go ahead, Mrs. Kraus. Mr. Wenzel, go ahead and explain what we just accomplished here.
Four. Oh, a lot of stuff.
Right.
There were four ordinances that were passed after final second reading tonight. Those were the first four that you heard, that you had the public comment portion, which is required under the state statute. And then the final two were introduction of the ordinances, and you heard some people come up tonight and talk about them. The ordinances will be back up for a second reading and public hearing specifically on those two ordinances. Those public hearings are the ones that Ms. Kraus indicated are on October fifteenth, twenty eighteen. So if anybody wishes to make a record with regard to those ordinances, that would be the time to do it. I'm, you're just, you're just there, Mr. Fernandez, that's why I'm looking in that direction. Generally, Mr. Krokken left. I was going to ask Mr. Krokken if he was trespassing at Sixty Stanley, but I refrained. I know he wasn't.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's the.
Thank you, Counselor. Have a motion, a second to open to public comment for general matters only.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to this motion signify by saying nay. Motion passes, the floor is now open.
Can we let, Council President, can we make sure Mrs. Beers goes up first since last?
Sure. Ms. Beers, you're welcome to come up first.
Sorry, are you short?
No, not at all. You can lower that microphone down so we can hear you.
Are you telling me I'm short? Okay. This is probably very easy, hopefully.
I'm sorry, dear, your name and address?
See? Pearl Beers, one eighty-one Long Hill Road, apartment K five.
Thank you.
Okay. On behalf of seniors, our bus, we have one driver, his hours, Monday through Friday, eight till two, Tuesdays and Thursdays, eight till two-thirty, and no bus on Wednesdays. I have a concern, I think it's time, we need at least one more driver and extended hours. We are flourishing, we're doing great things, we have events, and seniors should be able to go to events later on. So I'm just asking that you look into another, at least one more driver. I know they need a special license, and it's not that easy, but we really, and for special events especially, you know, sometimes even at night, people can't go. I mean, you know, so I'm requesting that you look into at least another driver.
Thank you, Mrs. Beers, for your comments this evening. The Township Council, along with the mayor, will definitely look into that and see what we can come up with. I do think, Mayor Damiano, Mr. Kusia, we're in the process of purchasing a new senior bus, or looking at?
We, we do have a grant application pending for, to acquire a new senior bus. With respect to adding an additional driver, I can certainly ensure that it is something that, as discussed during next year's budget, it is not currently budgeted for this year, but it can certainly be something that is added to the list. I will say and add that I have been to bingo's on a couple of Tuesdays and Thursdays, and to say that you're a flourishing group, I think, is an understatement. I've run out of there scared a couple of times with that group, afraid that if I were to yell bingo incorrectly, that I might not have walked out of there myself. So, it is certainly a flourishing group.
Thank you, Mrs. Beers.
Thank you.
Ms. Struthers?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joan Struthers, and my home is twenty-four Harrison Street. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Suesi and the entire Little Falls Fire Department, Chief Post and the Little Falls Police Department, Sergeant Gianduso, and Little Falls Cert OEM Team, which I am a proud member of, and the Little Falls DPW staff. And I understand the Wayne and Fairfield Emergency Squads also helped on that evening that my neighborhood during the flash flood on August eleventh. They did a great job evacuating everyone safely and aided in the cleanup efforts. I just have another special thanks to the Girl Scout Troop three sixty-seven, I understand they're ninth graders, they came around the neighborhood just recently, and they had said that they set up a GoFundMe page, along with another, I believe, an athletic club, and they distributed gift cards to all the flood victims, so I wanted special thanks for them. And in closing, I just have a question for mayor. I was wondering if the DOT has ever been contacted regarding the structural integrity of the bridge which goes over Route forty-six, which was hit by the numerous cars during that flood?
Yes, I have confirmed two times with them that shortly after the event, a structural engineer was there, the bridge is deemed structurally sound, and they found no issues with the, with the structure itself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the council meeting and telling us your comments. We greatly appreciate that, and for the record, Ms. Struthers is a great member of the planning board here in our town, and gives her time a lot, and we definitely appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Renee Shapiro, President of the Alliance for a Better Community, one sixty-three East Main Street, Box one oh four, Little Falls. I want to thank you all very much for that proclamation, we're very happy to accept it. We love doing what we're doing in town, it's, we love the concerts and everybody's coming. This year, the concerts were bigger than ever before, and that's really great. We have a couple of events coming up, November second, we're actually doing for the first time a cabaret night, and it's going to be at the Kitch, and it's a singer-comedian. And then December, of course, we'll have our holiday dinner again, we'll be holding it at the Kitch as we, you know, try to get to all the different places in, in Little Falls. A special thank you to Phil for helping with the concerts, the pales were always there, everything was clean, beautiful, grass was cut, can't do it without him, the police department, our little biker, we miss the biker when he's on vacation, everybody loves him, and putting out the signs, so everybody working together was great. You know, I didn't speak at the time of the other agenda, but as I'm sitting here, I kept thinking more and more, I've sat on so many committees in Little Falls. There was a redevelopment committee for seven years. There was the master plan, two of them. There were public meetings for everyone to attend, to listen, to create, to talk about. Anybody that wanted to could ask their questions. This is the first time in the years, and I'm here since two thousand and one, that there's actually a redevelopment plan. Yes, there is a renaissance. Yes, things are happening. And to do, sometimes things have to be purchased and make changes so that you can develop what you want to develop, to make our town better. That is very, very important. If you look at all the successful towns, if they have a main street, their property values, when your main street is developed and built up, property values skyrocket. So I applaud you all for thinking that way and going to make our town the way our town should be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. The floor is open? Yes. You don't have to raise your hand, you just come on up.
Marilyn Anthony, one eighty-one Long Hill Road, Unit four. I haven't been here in a while, and I just have to say, I am so proud of this council and so proud to be part of this town, whether we agree or disagree with the people who are coming up here. It's so respectful. I remember years ago when it wasn't, and I thank you all for your hard work and your concern. Okay.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Would anyone else in the public would like to come up? Would you like to come up?
My name is Rob Mendoza, and I'm a resident nineteen Harrison Street, and I want to echo Mrs. Struthers' words to the service of this township. It was, I was one of the ones that lost a home, I'm still not in my home, I have a foundation that has collapsed on one side. I received the, just last week, to receive the analysis from the engineer, it's not only the sidewall, but the front wall, there needs to be, they say, it's beyond, it needs to be replaced. So basically, right now, it's like, we don't know where to go, because, you know, I, this, I've started doing some questioning, and to raise the house, to do the foundation, I'm talking about, as of today, my wife had a conversation with a company, they're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred and forty thousand dollars to do the whole foundation. So really, we're in a pickle, we don't know what to do. So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, you've been great in responding to our questions, I still haven't empty out, I still have about eight inches of water, I don't have electricity, I don't have gas, I don't have water running, and basically, when that time comes, I need to, you know, start taking the, my content out. I am very hesitant to start doing that, because I need to shore up the house in order to have a safety measure in place for whoever goes in the house, otherwise, there's a liability. So, you know, I, the house may look, you know, try to make sure that the lawn gets cut, so it's not an eyesore, it's already an eyesore with the fence that Mr. Simone put for us, you know, in order to keep people away and a safety, but I do not know what's